And when needed, you know, students coming from, um, you know, all different places and having that constant daily sane person to check in, um, provides that support that I think we all value.
Just cutting, cutting it back to home.
Yeah.
And how it really impacts.
So from twenty-six to fourteen, um, one of the additional concerns this year was that, um, the, it was a little excessive. The twenty-six minutes was more than was needed.
And it used to be?
Fifteen, I think.
Yeah. Twenty, yeah.
So they're not seeing the value of the extra time?
Um, I think that it was, uh, the additional time was not, um, not as beneficial as just adding more good stuff. It was, it was not as beneficial as, um...
Can I just digress for a second? What was the thought process behind expanding it so much?
Um, at one, I mean, it was told to me one time that there was a desire to have it back-to-back with lunch so that rocks could spend lunch together if they wanted an extended lunch and potentially go outside. Um, so that was the desire, and I think in actuality, it's not what they...
And it had to be matched with lunch, and you couldn't do lunch for twenty minutes when it's...
I understand. I didn't know if there was, if there was an expectation of extended support or other, other, uh, teacher-student interactions taking place that required expanded time.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Um, one of the, uh, takeaways that we came to, and this has been working in some of our subcommittee groups, is, um, our quarterly offerings, the specialist classes that, uh, that students are enrolled in just for a quarter, health, art, tech ed, and computer ed. Um, the discussion here was to semesterize those courses, so combining computer ed and tech ed, uh, so that a student who's enrolled in those courses would have that offering on an every-other-day basis, rotating basis, and the same thing with, uh, art and health. So this provides a couple of different things. Earlier in the year, we looked at some of our enrollment numbers, and some of the imbalances that were highlighted were specifically in those, um, those specialist courses. This would allow, uh, for us to pull those specialist courses, um, off a team. As a teacher, uh, who has four groups a year, um, you're learning your students, and by the time, uh, you're familiarizing yourself with, um, whether it's, um, individualized education plans, or five-of-four plans, or, um, health plans, or, um, learning style, or, um, anything related to, uh, working with, with students, um, you're transitioning out, and that, that, while it does provide benefits at times to be on, uh, on the same team as, um, some of the core classes, um, it doesn't necessarily benefit, uh, that, uh, specialist teacher and their relationship and, uh, rapport with, with students. So, uh, spreading that out a little bit provides, uh, a little, uh, ability to, um, balance some of our enrollment numbers. So, one of the examples that came up earlier this year, we had twenty-seven students in a, in a computer class, and at that same exact time, there was another class for, um, tech ed that was running at about sixteen, and we didn't have the flexibility to move, whereas, um, if a seventh-grade specialist teacher is working with all seventh-grade students for a semester, they're gonna have a better sense, a better ability to work with those kids because they're gonna know them for longer, and also, um, they'll have, they'll be able to speak to both teams, uh, and have a, um, have input into the, some of those common planning, uh, groups, uh, for the, uh, for the team, uh, conversation. So, uh, there's also been some good conversation around some of the cross-curricular benefits that could result from, uh, combining tech ed and computer ed at the same time, uh, and, um, I'm really excited about, uh, some of the potentials that, um, could result from, from just that alone. This current proposal, this pilot, maintains our current schedule predictability for student services. This was something that, uh, I think was a driving force in, uh, coming away from the waterfall schedule where, uh, if you have a, um, a related service provider, be it OT or speech or something of that nature, um, where someone comes in and offers services, uh, you need to have predictability so that a student isn't being pulled from, uh, a core class or randomly, um, you know, a PE class or, or what have you. Um, those intervention blocks, uh, we try to target, uh, a skills class so that they have, uh, they're not being, um, um, a pull-out system where they're missing a, a class, that, a regulated class, and, uh, this schedule, uh, maintains the predictability that our current schedule does.
Can, can you elaborate on, on how it accomplishes that? I mean...
Sure. So, um, if you look at, um, let's say, for example, a student had, uh, period four skills as an example...
And they would have period four skills every day?
Every time that they have period four.
Every time that they have period four. So on Thursday, in this proposal, um, period four drops on Thursdays, so, uh, it occurs at a predictable time.
Yep.
So as a outside, um, provider, um, you know that on, on Wednesdays, I'm gonna meet at, with Billy at, uh, on Tuesday, uh, at nine fifty-four, and it's a scheduled period turn-on. So on next week, on Tuesday, that's gonna happen again, whereas with a waterfall schedule, that period four class, there wouldn't be predictability.
Yes, but, so they won't, they wouldn't meet with that student on Thursday then?
Yeah, very, uh, very few, if any, and, um, having, uh, worked with, um, the special ed department through this, and, um, Bob and I have met, and I've met with Jen Campbell, um, related services are very, very rarely offered five days a week. Our current schedule wouldn't provide that either.
Okay.
Our current schedule is four out of five. Uh, next year's schedule would be four out of five as well, um, and, um, related services, um, oftentimes are once a week, um, as many as four, but, but not more.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, one, another additional benefit here is currently our, um, service provider is able to see more than one student in our block, uh, oftentimes it's a half-hour intervention that they'll come in for, um, and, um, providing a fifty-eight-minute, uh, block, and just, this is just, uh, with our, uh, speech pathologist, um, she said that she would be able to work in, um, more flexibility because she'd have the ability to work with two students in a fifty-eight-minute block and offer, uh, services, um, in that regard. So, um, there's also been conversation with the high school and, um, and working to align, uh, some of our, um, shared employees, uh, in addition to service providers, but teachers who work both at the high school and work down here, and/or students who may, um, who may take, uh, an advanced math class, uh, up at the high school. So, I think there's still some, um, some fine-tuning as far as, uh, maybe which classes drop or what have you, uh, to really kinda get down to the nitty-gritty on, on what, um, how we could really, um, fine-tune some of those things to make sure it worked, uh, kind of long-term for, uh, for teachers, shared service, uh, students who come in, uh, and take classes at both schools. Um, and then, uh, lastly here, one of the, um, uh, important things that we wanted to make sure was that our science labs, uh, had the, uh, ability to run labs in the fifty-eight minutes. Uh, the feedback that I got from my four teachers was that currently, in our current schedule, really the only window of opportunity to run labs is once a week in the block day. Um, and with this coming to that middle ground, that fifty-eight minutes, uh, this would open up, uh, three days a week where they could run labs and have that, um, flexibility, uh, whereas our current schedule doesn't offer that. So, um, there are a lot of benefits, I think. Um, I think we've, we've come to, uh, a place, I'm, I'm, I'm proud the, the work the committee has done. Um, I do su- support this schedule. I feel like the, um, uh, at the end of the day, this is, this is better for students, uh, at the middle school. I think, um, there is some, some work still to be done, um, but I am really happy and proud of, uh, the work that the committee has, uh, has done.
There's no passing time shown between periods four and five?
What did you say?
There's no passing time shown between periods four and five?
So, um, so period, if you look down into the, um, nitty-gritty...
Well, I see, if it's a period, they have it, but if it's lunch, they don't?
Yeah, it's a class. That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So, uh, students going from, and our, our current schedule doesn't, doesn't offer either.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out which, which...
So if you go to rock, where you go to lunch, there is no passing included, um, in the minutes. We were able to get the students' passing time from class to class, but if you're going from class to lunch, that, that time is yours, and twenty, twenty-five minutes, you'd be surprised how long, twenty-five minutes.
Grade seven gets a minute, grade eight doesn't.
Uh, yeah, so, eh, let me see here, so fifty...
There's a one-minute offset between seven and eight. I don't know if that was intentional. You've got, you've got ten fifty-two to eleven seventeen for eighth grade, and tenth, uh, and, uh, and then, uh...
Ten fifty-five, it's three minutes.
I'm just looking to see.
But that's...
Oh, no, it's eleven, it's eleven, oh, it's eleven fifty-three, yeah, so no, no, it doesn't, there's no passing time in there.
Yeah, you stay at this too long.
Yeah, so, um, I have just a couple of questions.
Sure.
So when you say the semesterizing of those, um, quarter classes, will that mean that the kids will, when you say it's gonna be off-team, does that mean that Team A and Team B might be mixed up in those classes?
Yeah, which is not, um, not dissimilar to what happens in world language or in reading...
No, I think that's actually great. I mean, one of the complaints that people have directed towards me about the middle school team schedule is, it's really hard for kids who are new to the district to meet the other hundred kids. Like, they meet the hundred kids on their team, and they don't. So that, the more opportunities that we have to mix more kids up before they head to the high school, I think makes a lot of sense, and that seems like a great place to do it.
Yeah, and I, the, um, I don't want to, um, look past the benefits of, of team, and I think that, um, the semesterizing of those classes actually allows the teacher to be a, a more knowledgeable contributor to, uh, to both teams having known stu...
Right.
Will know students for a longer period of time.
Makes a lot of sense.
Um, and, yeah, I, I think that it actually, in some ways, improves that team model in that regard. Um, on the student end, um, the group itself, um, you know, might be mixed, but the, the value for the teacher to have input into, uh, that core, uh, group of teachers, I think, actually improves.
Yeah, I think it sounds like a good plan. And then how does this, um, I know one of the biggest concerns, and I, maybe you've addressed it, you may have, um, we talked about, you know, bringing in OT or PT, but what about some of the other concerns that the, the original schedule change was really about those kids who need more than one type of instructional service? So there's kids who have, need Read 180 and need math support. Like, are those kids still gonna be able to, 'cause that was one of the major reasons to make these changes, was so that more kids could acci... Am I correct in what I'm saying? Is that what? More kids could get access to more, um, support services without them having to miss out on core curricular or the, even the elective curriculum?
Yeah, and, uh, I, I don't wanna get too far ahead of myself talking about, uh, specific sections. Um, Read 180 in its current format does create, uh, for some challenges that it is currently running as a double-block class.
Right.
So if you are looking for a student to have, uh, their four cores, plus their rotating specialists, plus a music and, uh, PE, uh, and a skills, that double-block of Read 180, that's nine into eight.
Yeah.
And that doesn't work. So, um, um, working with, um, student services and working with, um, the teachers of the class and, um, the high school as well, and having consistency in how that, that class is offered, and, um, maintaining, um, the effectiveness of the program, uh, will be our goal, but, um, that is something that, uh, again, if this moves forward, um, will be a finer tuned, um, a, a, a point of finer tuning that we'll need to look into. The reading, um, you know, that, that replaces a world language.
Right, right.
Uh, but the Read 180, the double section of that, um, does create, and then furthermore, in its double-block setting, um, a back-to-back class, um, you know, you're, you're looking at nearly two hours of, uh, on a, on a block day.
And it was a double-block two years ago, but that was when the blocks were, it, it was a, it was a short block, so it was like a forty-minute block. So now you're talking about a fifty-eight-minute block. So, you don't, could you do it without doubling it completely? Like, could you just do one block, 'cause it's fifty-eight minutes?
Um, I, I don't have the answer of, could you yet, but that, those questions are being discussed.
Okay.
And I think that that's something that, um, you know, there's, there's a couple different ways to look at it, um, maybe reducing some of the, um, the size of the groups, so maybe two sections.
Right, yeah, I got you.
Singular blocks, and then offering what supplemental instruction is required in maybe a directed study setting.
Yeah.
Um, so, like, right now, we have students who take, um, Read 180, and even though it's a double-block, they don't take it for a double-block.
Right.
They're in, uh, a skills class, or they're in a PE, um, for the, one of the two classes.
Okay, so you feel like this is gonna work, but you have some tweaking to do?
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm optimistic and confident that, um, we can make, um, we can make these changes and improve, uh, the overall, uh, schedule for, for students, um, but there is still work to be done, for sure.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
If I could just chime in, uh, Tim and I met, uh, this afternoon, and, you know, the original driver, you go back a year for the change to the master schedule, was delivery of services in special education and for our, some of our non-traditional learners. And the schedule that is currently in place made some improvements to service delivery, but after sitting with Tim and having him walk through this schedule, this makes vast improvements in service delivery and gives a great deal of options, um, when it comes to servicing students, not just in special ed or on five-of-four, but I think across the spectrum, so, I think it's, uh, it's really something that has a lot of potential to work very well for our students.
Thank you. Tom? I thought you might've wanted to say something.
I'm, I'm, yeah. Two questions. Going back to the, the first page where you highlighted the four main concerns.
Yeah.
Um, could you just help, help me understand how the student access is, um, is, is benefiting as far as giving students more access to teachers for, uh, unanticipated or, or extra, extra need, and the other is, where does the, um, where does the team time, uh, map over into the missed schedule?
Yep. So, uh, the first question, um, it's similar in nature to what, uh, Krista was asking about the, it would, it would require some, some hand-scheduling to ensure core teachers aren't teaching at the time when students on that team are in skills.
So the assumption is that that will happen during skills?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. That, that help, that, that's enough of an answer, I understand.
And in regards to the four main concerns, uh, I would say we've addressed three of those very well, um, with the proposal, and the fourth one being the flexibility to do something team-time. Um, even with our current schedule, uh, it does, does involve some out-of-the-box thinking in, as far as how we do it, um, but this does, this current proposal does not answer, uh, number four as well as, um, as well as desired, but coming up with something that addressed the big ones, the three of the four main concerns, uh, we felt like was, it was, uh, at a point where it was as good as, um, we could hope.
What would it have to have to allow that? It would be that all the team were doing, or, uh, every, I, I guess, I, I don't know, what, what would it take to allow that to even happen?
Um, it would involve, um, core teachers and all team, s- students on team, uh, only being affiliated with, with groups of teachers of, with that, with that group, so, um...
I mean, I'm thinking back to, to my high school days, and you had an assembly, everybody missed something, and it never, it never mapped out equally. I, I can't envision a, a scenario where it's, it, it's not gonna screw things up.
So, um, there are certainly challenges when you have those out-of-scheduled events happen, um, and one of the goals was to maintain schedule balance. Um, when you have a, a waterfall schedule, um, you can respond quickly and continue to roll in that same direction, and, um, that creates the issue on the other front where you lose the predictability for student services.
Okay, so, so that was one of, one of the things that was lost when we made the change to the current schedule a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, and you were hoping to recover it, but harder, easier said than done?
It's easier said than done. I think, um, the proposed schedule could be a little, um, less challenging, um, than our current one, uh, in regards to that team-time thing, but it will definitely still...
It's no different than if you have a snow day and you gotta recover from it.
It, it creates, uh, a similar kind of, of challenge, um, not to say, um, that it's easy to do, um, but, um, you find a way.
So these four concerns were the new concerns, the concerns with the change?
Current, current schedule.
With the current schedule.
And I would say we addressed three out of four of those pretty well. Uh, the team-time one will continue to be a, a challenge.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions?
I'd like to commend the committee, 'cause I think you guys did a really good job addressing all of this and looking at it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just wanna take a moment to thank Tim for his leadership on this. Uh, this is something he stepped into in September. He has done Neumann's work. I know he's met probably with every administrator here, uh, to make sure that each separate entity, um, was looked at, but above all, what's impressed me is his, uh, his willingness to always put the child first. And when I say the child, I mean, all our children from all the different spectrums. For that child who is excelling and needs to go to the high school, this schedule's probably going to work. For that child who's struggling and needs a separate programming, this schedule will work. And then the piece that I think he's really picking up nicely is that child who, on occasion, needs to go to math, science, English, and history to get a boost, this schedule is gonna accommodate that because their team teachers are going to be available. So, uh, his leadership on this has been tremendous, um, and I think probably in the next couple of months, we'll be able to come back with a, a final schedule for board approval. So, thank you, Eddie.
That's great, Tim. And that is what we've heard from teachers who've communicated with us, that the biggest concern has been not being able to access their kids during skills, and so that's, seems to be something that you're addressing, which is awesome, this schedule's addressing, and congratulations to all of the members.
But that's not been a unique problem. I mean, that is not just a ske- probably, that was not just a scheduling problem that was created by this schedule that's in place this year. That is a historical problem that we've had with the schedule where there would be, and sometimes it wasn't all year, sometimes it would be like one quarter that basically that math teacher was no longer available because the skills overlapped. It was just the way things functioned.
Yeah.
That has always been the biggest challenge.
Again, I, I would like to, this, this will not be perfect, it will definitely be better.
Well, what I'm trying to say is, like, if you can't solve it, it's not as if it was just a one-time problem.
Yeah.
This has been a problem historically, and it's not something we want to have, 'cause clearly, we want all of our kids to be able to access their core teachers, 'cause that's the reason why we have skills in middle school. It's just not necess, it's very difficult to have that perfect system.
Thank you.
Is there a ongoing risk that when you bring this forward as something more concrete and we're looking to take action, all of a sudden, people are gonna come out of the woodwork and, and say, "I don't know about this, and why is this happening now?" I mean, to what degree is the work of the committee disseminated among the full staff? And, and do you feel that now that there is a clearly acknowledged member of the bargaining unit present, that their needs are being fully endorsed, or their, their concerns are, are, are being met and that this will be endorsed so that we don't run into the same kinda shell?
Yeah, I would, I would be, um, uh, I, I would like to think that it's been as transparent a process as, as could be. Um, our, our meeting notes are shared, um, any proposal that has been brought to the committee, um, has been shared with the staff. Um, we've had, uh, staff meetings where, um, I've highlighted some of the main points that I just did here, um, in describing the schedule. Um, I, I don't, I don't think there's anyone on staff who is unaware of, uh, of this proposal, uh, where the committee stands and the work that's been done thus far. Um, my, my feeling, uh, my, my honest feeling is that, um, the union representation, uh, on the committee, um, feels as though this would be a fair, um, pilot program. I think that there are some pieces of language in the current contract, um, that would need to be, um, revisited, uh, in negotiations, I think, next, is it August that I think those begin? Um, but my, my feeling is, again, going from where we are now in our current schedule to what would, uh, this proposal would be, um, I, I do feel like, uh, I, I have the support of, of staff, um, in, in that it is a better model than what we're currently in for, for all involved.
That, one little thing you threw in there concerns me is that, that this implementation of this would require potential contractual changes. Can, is, is this, is it appropriate, or is there any opportunity to at least say in what realm that exists?
Um, with the rotating blocks, I think, um, the number of prep periods per day would be something that would come up.
Is that, that thing about the two and one, two in one day rather than having one every day, is that, is that a bad aspect?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
But this one seems to be okay right now.
That's correct.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Tim. Um, so, moving forward to discussion, we have a revenue and expense report.
I'm assuming this is you, Linda?
We do have one.
Thank you.
Yay!
Numbers!
Co-op continues to be in a great position.
Shh.
See, I'm getting all excited for you.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Okay, so, with our expenses, we have a balance on the total line there of six-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, so that represents the budget funds we're not expecting to spend at this point in time. The biggest savings we're seeing overall are, continue to be hiring savings with salaries. Um, in addition to that, in special education, we have unfilled positions and also, uh, fewer out-of-district services. Health insurance also is coming in lower than expected, so there's a, in the benefit line, the two-hundred thousand dollars there is represented there.
Is it, is it lower than what they actually told us it was going to be 'cause we're paying less, or lower than we budgeted?
It, no, we budgeted the right amount...
We budgeted a GMR.
Based on what, at that point in time, everybody's insurance was. So if we have a new person who comes in a single plan instead of a family plan, we're saving money.
Okay, so it's not, it wasn't that they, it wasn't the whole GMR increase?
Correct.
It's just, it's just a mix of what we're...
Exactly. Inflows and outflows, changes every month.
The, the other thing, Tom, that's happening that we have to look at, if we hire somebody who's basically out of college, a lot of them are choosing to stay on their parents' plan.
Oh, no, I, I...
I mean, that's a significant difference, because they'll take the, the buyout money, but stay on mom and dad's plan 'cause they have four or five years, and that's something that we never know, but that's really interesting to see that happening now.
So I wasn't sure if it was due to the, the fact that we budgeted at GMR, and we got a lower rate versus it's the mix of plans, and it's a mix of plans, that's, to a certain extent, even better.
Yes, yeah.
The couple of areas where we're, um, slightly over-budget is the line that says instructional staff support. That is because of professional development costs coming in higher than expected for our non-union employees, and then in the line, uh, called site improvements, there's a forty-five thousand dollars over-budget there, and that is really three, three areas. One is the day tanks, second is the tech ed upgrades, and then finally, the turf field right-of-way. Those three things, um, came in, and we weren't expecting that in the original budget. So, if we take that six-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, carry that down to the revenue section, where we're, we have a budget, uh, a savings there of a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, mostly due to special education aid coming in, um, more than we expected, and if we add those together, that gives us the unreserved fund balance of eight-hundred-and-nine-thousand, which is enough to, uh, fund all of the trusts, the contingency, and the retained fund balance. And we did pass out the warrant articles for March, which, um, so those, those trust numbers are in the warrant articles we just passed out, and bottom line is, the fund balance shows two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars at this point, which we could potentially return to taxpayers. So, any questions?
The, um, special ed, um, I guess it's the salaries and stuff, open positions, is that because we have openings we haven't been able to fill or because we have opening, we have reduced needs?
I don't know.
Yeah.
For sure, the specifics, I, I, I don't know if they're filling those positions or not.
No, uh, we are, I think, um, we have a, a couple of para-educator positions open, one at the high school and one at the middle school right now, uh, but otherwise, we filled all of the open positions.
I guess what I'm... I guess what I'm wondering is, does it represent a challenge we're having at fulfilling our needs in-house? Are we having to bring contractors or things like that in to do it or?
No, what it really represents is just the economy and the unemployment rate. And when we do end up with an opening, it's taking us longer to fill that opening. So we're using in-house personnel to cover for each other and things of that nature until the vacancy is filled.
Right, so it doesn't mean that they're unfilled right now. It just means this fiscal year, they have been unfilled for a portion of time.
I just didn't know if we were, if it was resulting in something else bumping up like contracted services or something like that.
No, it's really been, in a lot of cases, the hourly person. And part of it is that there's the opportunity to get a better job. So we've had some people leave us, some people looking for year-round employment and things like that. But at the same time, we've been able to, through Bob and Amy's work, backfill. And we're really down to just two positions at this point, so we're in good shape right now.
Yeah, we did have to, in the fall, contract out. We had a speech-language assistant who did not return, and that is a very challenging position to fill for. So currently, we are contracting to that position, which is some increased costs. We also had a student who was an out-of-district, a residentially placed out-of-district student that moved to a neighboring community, so there's some cost savings there as well.
Would you say in general you're seeing shortages of paras across the whole SAU?
Every district has vacancies. Well, first of all, every, all three districts in SAU 41, but if you look throughout the state--
Is it across the state as well?
There's a real significant shortage. We've actually been pretty fortunate to be able to fill most of our positions fairly quickly. So they don't remain vacant for very long, but there does seem to be a considerable amount of turnover in those positions.
So you're seeing shortages in support staff, so paras, custodians still, secretaries? And then are we seeing shortages in teachers as well, applications for teaching positions? We're seeing struggles in getting those kinds of things?
Our long-term subpool is drastically shrinking. You used to put out an English or a history position and have 25 resumes. Right now, we have one open where we haven't seen really anything coming. It's just that the economy is doing that well. And a lot of individuals who may have gotten trained as educators have moved over into other fields because of the differences in pay.
That's interesting. So my, I guess I'm asking the question about like the overall picture because I want to make sure that we're competitive and it's not-- so we can have that conversation about whether or not we're competitive in offering-- can't get people and we might need to pay them more.
Probably not the only district that can't get people. I mean, all you have to do is go through the School Board Association emails that have come in. I just happened to flip through it. I think in the last week, we've seen, what, three positions for administrators? Like business admin, you know, central office administrators, business office administrators. Linda likes us now. She's not going to leave us for SAU 39 or whatever it was. And principal positions opening up in a number of different districts.
So education overall is seeing shortages.
Same as every other sector of our economy. I mean, New Hampshire is struggling from a statewide basis to fill the jobs that we have opened. We have a crisis. We have a housing crisis and a employee crisis, a workforce shortage.
And I would argue that the co-op in particular is pretty competitive in terms of we offer a pretty comprehensive benefit package to our para educators, which is not something that you typically see in other districts. Even within SAU 41, you'll see that it is more attractive to come to the co-op to be a para educator if you want to work with middle school or high school students because of those benefits as compared to the other districts.
That might not help us come to district meeting. Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, well--
No, it's actually--
It's an honest answer.
It's good information, and that's what we need to present, is the information that's there. So that's awesome. Thank you.
In-house staff are always more economical, more efficient than--
Absolutely.
Question? Can we, can you elaborate on the transportation savings? I know that we were having issues. We got the new bus company and have new vans and whatnot. Is that contributing to our savings?
Well, I think the vans for vocational services have worked out in two ways. One, I think it's very much an economic advantage. But as Rick has informed me, our students are getting there in a much more timely fashion. They have much greater flexibility in pickup and drop-off. So from an educational standpoint, I think that's really gone very, very well. And I think the vans, including the cost of drivers, have become very cost-effective. Overall, the transportation through STA has been solid. We are encountering, encountering some sickness this time of year, which is normal for everybody. And just recently, we've had to double up some elementary runs, which is not pleasant to do. But that's more a case of a driver's either getting the flu or their child having the flu. But the consistency from the bus company and their responsiveness has been tremendous. So I want to, you know, compliment Kelly. She did a lot of work with that contract. And then Rick, Amy, and Kelly and Lauren at the high school really worked out on the vans. And I really like our procedures in that as far as, you know, how we use the vans, how they're always got gas in them, all the little things that you think about when you have multiple drivers. So they've done a really nice job.
Great news. Well, thank you so much, Linda. That seems like that was a very positive report. The numbers are in the right direction. That's awesome. Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work and your whole team over there.
The combining the routes not happening with the co-op?
Not, maybe it hasn't, you know, and we've had--
It's happened pretty consistent in Hollis for the last month-ish.
Yeah, yeah. And it's two specific runs, and it's basically kind of based on the size of the number of students on the buses that make it combinable. But I actually had a conversation with the bus company today. They're looking to, again, the advantage of a large terminal is to maybe move somebody over to our terminal during this illness season to alleviate that. But the nice part is our dispatcher now is also a train driver. So on occasion, she gets in the bus. A mechanic is also a train driver. So it's a much better situation from our vantage point than it was a year ago.
They also seem to be communicating the combinations a little earlier.
They're much better because they're very proactive in reaching out, even though we don't necessarily want to get that news, understanding that the sooner we get it, the less likely there's going to be a petition. Yep.
Okay, thank you. And I see we also have some, a lot of coaching openings--
Yes.
That I know Brian and Ron are working on. Okay, so moving on to the facilities committee update, field update?
In your board packet, Kelly this month put together a financial update on the turf field. And I'd just like to run through that a little bit and give you some updates. Starting up at the top, we have completed work for construction, which is $1,489,700. We have construction administration, which was completed by Teagan Bond, at $22,061. We have construction prep services, which is everything Teagan Bond did to get us ready and to move forward to 44/7. And our permits and our surveying and all the environmental pieces were $5,598, which were done by Grove Environmental Services. And then we spent $193 to have all individuals who worked on the site background checked. So we have additional estimated costs of $34,000, which is money we're holding because they'll be back in the spring to finish up some of the work that still had to be completed. We got a little too cold and couldn't finish everything. So that would bring us to a number of $5 million, excuse me, $1,596,251.
You could do a lot more with $5 million, man.
As you may recall, the voters approved $1,660,000. We earned $9,032 in interest on that money. So we have a remaining balance when the project is completed of $72,781. The only overage that we had was the ledge removal that I had made the board aware of. We decided not to do the gravel parking area because we feel that it would just, we'll be able to gain parking elsewhere. That would be much more beneficial to students than way up back. And then the other piece, we did not do the light pole bases. And we had that discussion just based on the company, if we were to put the bases in, would be guaranteed to have to go to that company. We didn't think that was wise. This gives us much more flexibility. So we were expecting quick construction back as soon as it gets warm enough in March. And they will do some, well, I'll say trimming. They have some finishing and paving. We have some reseeding to do. A couple of our drainage ponds will be examined again. And we'll be doing some, what I would call landscaping cleanup type of things just to get it to where it looks the way it should look to start. At the same time that's going on, as I told you, Brian is investigating some bleachers. And we continue to work with HB Elevates, looking to secure some future contributions to move us forward at length eventually. And I'll take any questions about the--
Can you just tell me what that top table is, where the numbers come from? Because I see the bottom is actual.
The middle one, the bid information, Tom?
Well, the very one, the very top table.
Yep.
What are the, is that what was budgeted? Because the bottom one is actual.
Yes. The top one is you had the budget. And we still have $30,000 worth of things that they haven't completed yet. So we're still holding that money. So that total cost when Quik is finished this spring will be $1,519,700.
And that is that--
So, Tom, I just wanted to--
And that's what's down at the total that comes from the bottom?
If you look at the very top on construction, the $1,519,000--
Yep.
That breakdown is down there at the bottom.
Okay, so the top one, so when you did, additional estimated costs, that's yet to be done, but it's got nothing to do with, it doesn't constitute an overage?
Correct.
No, those are just--
Okay.
So the only thing that we had that we paid extra for was the 12-2 for ledge removal.
And that's in the bottom number? So this number goes up here, I see. It's not presented in cards.
Any other questions on the--
So what's the pay, what, if any, is the current paving plan?
We paved the road up to the field. We paved a path around the field. We have put in the paving for the emergency vehicles. And we'll finish, I'm going to call it a top coat, of the path that takes you back down to the parking lot past our current softball field.
Is there handicap parking up by the field as well?
Yes.
And that's paved?
Correct.
And none of this overlaps any of the current high school paving needs, correct?
It does not.
Well, that's great. Thank you so much. It's so nice to see a big construction project actually come in under budget. That's amazing. So congratulations to you and your team and all of the people who've worked so hard on that, so.
Just for the official record, I may come back and ask you to consider allocating that to the bleachers.
Well, I get it, but--
I just wanted--
I hope you do. Just me, Board Member Holly.
Round estimates, do we have any clue what those bleachers are that he's looking at?
Sure. A potential set coming from New Jersey could be around $75,000, and that would be for 800 to 1,000 seats. A set coming up, say, from further south would be close to $110,000.
Okay. That's the kind of ballpark--
That's way less than we're due, right?
Brand-new ones, just to give you an example, are between 3 and 350.
That's huge savings.
And again, all of this would be, would be provided pictures, would have the ability to visit the site prior to making the purchase. So we might be sending Brian someplace, but he's already assured me he has no problem going, especially if it's warm.
I'll go with him.
There you go.
I think he needs some supervision assistance.
You guys can drive down to New Jersey together.
Hit a Wawa.
As long as I can have Wawa, it'll be fine.
That's all that matters. You gotta go south, though, not north.
It seems like we need at least one big enough to hold 1,000, though, right, Rick?
What's the NHIA thing, like 1,000? Is that what I mean?
I would say 1,000 would be, that would be what we would like to shoot for.
As a minimum, was we want to be able to put all of our kids and some parents in a bleachers.
Well, should we also need, ever need to use it, it could be another staging area for evacuation. So to be able to have a nice round 1,000 would be good for safety reasons.
We could take a van.
And Rick has also suggested that it would become the home for graduation at some point up there.
Excellent.
Friday night.
Don't forget the lights.
Okay.
We don't necessarily need the lights in June. It stays light.
No, we could probably do a 5:30.
Oh, no, no, they were not. They were talking about graduation.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's excellent. Right, thank you very much. It's very exciting. So we are up to the, we've gone to the fee schedule, and then we'll talk about--
You want to go to--
I don't know. You listed a portion at first, so I guess we'll talk about a portion first. Okay, so I asked to put this on the agenda. Is it all right if I do this?
Yep, yeah.
This is not really to discuss a portionment at all. It's simply to discuss with the board the format for the meeting. So as you know, we'll be presenting. I've asked Tom to present with me, so Tom and I will present. Is that good?
You're asking the wrong person.
If there's other board members who would prefer a change in that, now's the time. Does anybody want to do it?
One of us will.
Okay, so you and Tom will discuss?
We'll discuss.
I would like a member from each town.
That's why I figure.
So, but you and Tom can discuss. But at this point, I'm trying to recruit Tom Orbeth or Melon. And anybody who would like to take my place. Okay. So I sent out two presentations to you via email. One was the presentation that we did at the public hearing. And I also sent out the presentation from 2015. So if you guys could get me some suggestions by Friday so I can kind of clean that up and get that over to Kelly and to Darlene so they can update whatever slides you think would be pertinent or appropriate. That would be great. One of the questions I got from a board member is, we, I've heard from Drew that there will be at least one presentation, alternate suggestion. I haven't heard, I spoke to him on Sunday, I have not heard that there will be another one. I will check in with him. But would it be something that the board would feel like we would want to have prepared rebuttals for presentations? Or would we want to be able to rebut presentations? That's my main question.
How would we be prepared?
Well, I know the one presentation that's coming, so I would know what they would be. I would know what they would say in their presentation, but I would know what formula they would want. I don't, if anything else comes through, I might not know, but--
Well, and if anything else comes through, we don't have that time to rebut. So it's if you're rebutting one, you rebut all eventually.
Right, yeah, that's kind of what I was preparing.
I guess the--
But the organized ones that are going to be longer than the, how long is Drew giving?
Two minutes, unless-- No, 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 for an organized presentation, about 10, I think, is what he said, right?
Yeah, it was, I was thinking it was either five or 10. But the organized ones that get that longer amount of time, they have to be arranged ahead of time. So we will know what those are. It's people who get up and amend it from the floor, get their two minutes, and sometimes they can get pretty creative.
Yeah.
I think the bigger question is, are we simply hoping to stimulate the discussion and the, let the legislative body then do the debating? Or do we feel that we want to defend this article actively as a board? Because, you know, if, depending on what comes forward, if it's something that I personally think is, is what I don't want as a citizen and as a board member, I want to speak against it, but I don't want to speak in representation of the board without, number one, the board's consent, and number two, some level of agreement that what I'm saying is, in fact, a board position.
Wouldn't our presentation of what we're proposing be our argument against anything else? I guess I'm trying to understand what you're saying because if someone comes with another presentation or amendment, well, opposing it, going back to the same thing that, you know, arguing that--
In vision, in vision district meeting type format where we've presented something and then someone else makes another presentation, do we just sit and we've said our piece?
I see what you're saying.
Or do we go up to the podium as, on behalf of the board-- Or do we go up to the podium as, on behalf of the board, to, I don't want to say tit for tat, but, you know, that, that kind of thing? If, if I think that something has been presented that is either misrepresenting or inaccurate...
So there's two different questions going on?
Well, I don't think that this, I, I think that we present, and anyone else can come to the podium either to dissent or with an organized dissent, and if any of us go to the podium again, or go to the podium, we go as an independent taxpayer, we don't go on behalf of the board. We go to the line, and we wait in line, and we, we don't speak from the front podium, we speak from the taxpayers' podium, and to that extent, if you want to defend the school board's formula, then go for it, and if you want to do something else, that's your prerogative as a taxpayer.
That, that's the input I was looking for, is that, is that the consensus?
That's the consensus from me, I agree with Liz on that. My only question is, what if the organized dissent presents inaccurate information?
Well, that's my concern.
But can't we get up as individuals to point out inaccuracies?
Okay, I mean, I think that's probably cleaner.
But here's where sometimes, then people get in line, and you're behind a lot of people, and then someone calls the question. I just, I worry that we can't defend it?
At that point, can't we as a school board clarify?
Well, that's what Tom's asking.
Yeah.
So we need to make a decision and talk to Drew ahead of time about that, or we don't, so that's that balance, I think. Is that, am I...
Yeah, in, in general, I'm, I'm not as concerned about the specific scenario, but I, I think there is a perception difference when that rebuttal comes from the front than when it comes from the back.
Right. I would like to say, to stick with what Liz said, we don't need to be rebutting things, but if there's an inaccurate, like a complete, like that is totally wrong, I think we may need to get up from the front and say, that's completely wrong. But not an opinion, not a perspective, not a, but more like...
Not an I disagree.
Right, not an I disagree, or we as the board disagree, but more just a, that number that you put up there is wrong. When you say that seventy-five percent of the students are from Hollis, that's wrong.
Okay, is Drew going to allow us to do that?
I can talk to Drew about it, but I just wanted to make sure that from the board's perspective, we're good with that, where we're not going to be rebutting and disagreeing, unless, as Liz says, you always, as a private citizen, have the right to go to the podium.
And I just think I would caution whoever is going to be answering those, so it's probably going to be you, or maybe Darlene, because it's going to be a budget...
Darlene won't be up there.
She's not sitting, the, the only people who are sitting in the front are the board.
All right, so it's going to be you armed with Darlene's data.
Hopefully in my ear, yes.
I mean, because ultimately, we do, we all rely upon her, and she's been consistently accurate for many, many years.
Absolutely.
And so, to the extent that we're going to be looking at numbers, there probably going to be numbers that have been confirmed by Darlene. But just be careful, I guess I would say, as to, you know, that which we're arguing is fact, and that which, which we are arguing is opinion, because I think it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of gray in this particular set of dialogue, and hopefully our presentation covers enough of the relevant facts.
And that's what I can use to help, so that's great. So the other thing, just to clarify and remind everyone, the viewing public, the, Drew will be leaving the ballot box open for an hour, so even though it's not required to do so, he will be, once we decide what to vote on. And I encourage board members to publicize the meeting in a very factual way on your social media, if you'd like to post, you know, that it's happening, and post the warrant, that's great. I believe that when you post on Facebook, you can turn off the comments, if you'd like to do it that way, you can, but you should comment that you're doing that, like, turning off the comments, because not looking for debate, I'm just looking for, you know, just letting people know. So, and it can be posted, obviously, on Twitter and Instagram and whatever social media platform we all, all the cool kids have, because we all have lots of those. Melanie, sorry.
Where else are we posting this to make our community aware?
So it's been legally posted in the paper, correct?
We've run multiple ads in the paper.
And it's been posted on all the schools, like on bulletin boards, and it's on the website, the SAU forty-one website, but...
It's also on the Brookline Town website, I know that for a fact.
Right, and I don't know, is it on the Hollis Town? It might be.
I haven't confirmed that, but I gave the information to, to both towns, and then I'm going to be speaking with the chief tomorrow to see if we can use the electronic sign to bring him next week, because a lot of people see that.
Right.
So kind of information's gone out to, like, the elementary kids, students, that babysitting's available?
Yep.
So...
And you can, if you post it, you can post that babysitting's available. I know the Brookline PTO has posted it on their social media, I don't know if the Hollis PTA has, but yes, it's been submitted as much as we can. There's just not a paper as much anymore. I mean, the Hollis Brookline Journal is just not something that people are really referencing as much, but it has been in the paper.
Yeah.
So...
What's the posted start time?
The post is, has been now changed to six thirty PM, so it is posted at six thirty.
I've seen it changed to on the...
It's been changed, it's been posted, and I've changed it on the presentation, so, well, it doesn't matter, because, but whatever, if I post the presentation. Any other questions on that? I just wanted to review that, so we were very clear on what we're doing as a board presenting this to the public, so. Good deal? Anything else? Great. Let's move on to the document in front of us, the community use of school facilities. I don't like the name of that document, I just want you to know.
You can change it.
Are we, are we doing the whole policy, or just the, just the fee schedule right now, right?
So I asked that we put this in discussion, because I believe in the policy committee, and people in the policy committee can remind me or correct me, we really didn't feel like this was ready for a vote. We were, this is a first run at this, and we had some questions, basic philosophical questions, would you say, that we wanted feedback from the board on that, because this is a, it's a document that has not really been dug into for quite some time, so I'm going to let Rick lead us in this?
I don't know. Are we talking about all of KF, or are we only talking about the fee schedule? And is, because is KF still going to come up later for first reading?
Yes, for second reading, actually.
For second reading.
So we're not talking right now, that, we don't know why this is in this corner, but it's related to this policy, it's related to policy KF, or K F. So, but this is the fee schedule, and we're going to talk to the...
So this is, this is not actually the policy?
It's not the policy, this is just the fee schedule.
Okay, that was confusing me.
This is the policy.
Got it.
This is the whole policy document. This is the fee schedule that's referenced in the policy that we will, we will actually approve. So we've approved the fee schedule according to policy, but the fee schedule's not part of the policy.
Okay, yeah, the KF in the corner confused me.
Hey, it's, it's okay, it's good. Great. Thank you, Rick, why don't you lead us through what we've done?
Speaking of confusing, so, so this, this form has been, I think it's been, was created during, when the auditorium was installed, I don't know how long ago that was, but it's...
It's still aging.
Still, so a long time ago, so going through it, like, as, as I mentioned, we wanted to just put something out there, and knowing that a lot of the attention would be around the fees, there was no special algorithm in terms of calculating new fees, it was, this hasn't been done in a long time, so doubling the fees made a lot of sense, because now that we've lived through having to replace things and recognize how much use our facilities get, you know, at least doubling the fees made sense, and knowing that, you know, if there's any feedback on the fees, charging or whatever, that's, we just, I started with that as a baseline for, to begin with, and then knowing that there would be discussion. Did, you know, the, having to do, leave it at red line, one, be able to black line it or red line it, depending on what color you got. We wanted to clean up the fee tables, and again, the only real difference, major differences is that the fees have largely been doubled, and they, I think we removed the green room from the high school, because no one could tell, could figure out what that actually was, so I'm sure it was something at some time, but it no longer exists to anybody's new memory, so. And if you move through it, I also collaborated with Mr. Principal Grison on the middle school fees, I tried to charge more than, I tried to double, I tried to raise his gym fee to twelve hundred, and we moved it down to six hundred, since it's less, holds less people, but again, that was the same philosophy in terms of charging fees. The other pieces, there was a lot of charging, you'll see like ten dollars per hour for utilities, ten dollars per hour for this, for that. The reality is, trying to calculate those numbers, actually you lose money in the manpower trying to calculate what that actually ends up looking like. So we tried to, we tried to simplify things, and if you go down to, it ends up being blue, I think, in the PDF, I just, I cut out all those other fees, custodial kitchen, Monday through Sunday, Sunday holidays, and I just put a forty dollar per hour for additional staff required, such as custodians, tech crew, cafeteria, and that forty dollars per hour was based on the step eight on the current, step eight at time and a half on the current contract for the, for the support staff, and with a little bit of extra in there, hoping that that goes up over time.
Quick question, right on that?
Yep.
If it's okay to interrupt, the, the ones you're taking out did have the minimum, and I, I can't remember, I know we talked about a minimum charge, but are, was it intentionally taken out?
It wasn't intentionally taken, I don't...
Just we talked about trying to get somebody in for a two-hour event on a day off, like if it's worth their time or not, so if we maybe talked about doing like a three or four-hour minimum, but it, it was in the previous, and it's not, so I just, I can't remember where we left that.
So, I could go, we could go either way on that, I happen to know, just based on kind of what I see, what people taking, they take jobs or there's detention, if it was forty bucks an hour is a pretty good rate for most of them, it's a, you know, so yeah, I could, we could go either way, if we wanted, decided we wanted to do a minimum, totally fine with that. The musical equipment, rather than trying to figure out whether it's a Steinway piano or whatnot, just charging a flat use for that, and then even the piece, we could, the police charges will probably change over time anyways.
Is that per instrument, or is that, you can have as much as you want?
That's a good question.
Yeah, it's a good question. I said, per, per day, per use of any musical instrument, excuse me, we could probably specify that a little bit more, I was thinking of the piano, every day you use the piano, but in theory, and I don't know that we've actually rented out anything other than the piano, as a matter of fact, so I don't know that we typically would rent out a lot of other, I'm not sure what we would have to rent out, actually.
Like a drum set, or... I just, I just didn't know what...
No, I mean, that's a good, that's a good point, we could make it per...
Or if you have two pianos.
Yeah, well, we do.
So, the driver, go ahead, Rick, I'm sorry, I didn't mind.
No, that's okay, and then the big, the bigger, you know, a lot of what started this, it needed, it's been needed to be done for a really long period of time, but was the anticipation of people wanting to use the field, so I don't know if that's where you're going on.
Yeah, that's what I was going for, yeah.
So, the field use was on there as just a flat rate of three hundred dollars with all the other fields, you know, again, we can certainly change that to however wish the board would like, you know, my argument was, you can make a bigger argument for charging more for the turf, regular fields, the non-turf fields, the grass fields, because of the wear and tear on them. The reality is, now, we anticipate people are going to want to use the turf field for sure, but we really haven't had anybody rent out the reg, the, the grass fields, I mean, that's typically not something that we've done.
You don't have them for the soccer camps and stuff in the summer?
According to Brian, we don't, he doesn't, he doesn't use this for any of the other...
So, I think one of the, the, the groupings are what...
You have to look at that A, B, and C.
Yeah, A, B, and C, indeed.
You have to look at A and B.
Hollis and Brookline fall under category A or B.
They don't get charged.
We can, we can look at specifically the definitions of C, D, and E, and...
Where do we define them?
Up the very first, right in the beginning, A is right underneath fee categories, so A is anybody who's on, you know, obviously the co-op school districts, official teams, clubs, organizations.
I need a little category A, not section A, I'm sorry, I got it.
Right, so that's why we don't have A and B on the fee schedule, because those are Hollis Brookline.
Right, typically us.
Well, the first is us, it's anything with the school, pretty much, and then the second is non-school youth organization, so that would be your Hollis Brookline Cavalier Soccer Club, your Hollis Brookline Youth Lacrosse Club, your BHYSL, that would be those groups.
They don't pay, but do they get priority? If you have someone who is a local organization that doesn't pay, and you have someone that would be charged, and they both want it for the same time, are we obligated to, to go to the local organization and no charge?
We actually have that, that's actually more part of our policy than it is part of the fee schedule.
So what is the policy?
I believe it's our, us first.
First serve, and then when requests are made currently, preference will begin first to school-sponsored groups, second to Hollis and Brookline community groups, and then to other organizations.
Okay, so we do, so we have to go to B before we can go to C?
Right, right.
As long as it first comes.
Unless C comes first.
Right, that's what I mean.
Right, if they've already booked it.
I think, didn't we add language in the policy to say that we had the, the principal or there doesn't need reserves the right to cancel or reschedule events as circumstances dictate? So it gives us, gives the principal an opportunity to say, gee, Mary, I know your organization has had the turf field booked for six, for six months, but it's lacrosse playoffs and we need the field, so we...
We want to host the game, we want to host the, you know, the playoff.
So we've given the principal the right to do that.
What is the, what is the unit of time that's assumed for these usages? So are we, will we distinguish between someone who rents it for the day, you know, for the morning, and someone for the afternoon, or does this necessarily cover for the whole day?
We had that question.
Yeah, we talked about that, that's...
Right, now it's listed as day use.
Okay, it doesn't say that, does it?
I think, I thought it did.
Says fees may be based on a three-hour period of time.
Says on school days, non-school days.
No, just in general.
Yeah, regulations, fees, fees based, that should be May, fees will be based on a three-hour period of time. So would we add, that's a question, like, would we charge six hundred dollars if you want to use the turf field for six hours?
Six hours.
So, that's a question.
If, if that's the case, then that, that becomes a much more, that becomes a very important thing in your consideration of what the number should be.
Well, the, the idea is that community groups can use that field, and they really don't have to pay, it's when they are trying to raise money.
Make money.
Profit-making activities, engagement, so if they're trying to raise money, they fall into the C category, so that's an important note for the public, because we did make that very clear when we supported the turf field, that it would be something that could use.
I know when we were trying to justify the turf field, there was a fair amount of investigation done about what neighboring areas get for charges for it, do, does anyone recall what, what that, those numbers were?
It's in keeping with this, I do recall those numbers.
I can't think of them off the top of my head, but I know them, because we paid them for our soccer team to go...
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we paid two hundred and fifty dollars to give up home field advantage to play that soccer playoff game at South Heagan two years ago.
But I think it was really important to note that we, and when we made those presentations, we didn't promise revenue.
No, no, I just, in terms of benchmarking, just...
Yeah, no, it was very close, we're within the range, I think.
Yeah, I think we're, I think the process is...
We can look at that, though, but we can go back in policy and do a little research and make sure that we're fair. The other thing that's important to note is that even if you're using a field on a Sunday where there's no school, and it's a holiday or whatever, and we would have to bring in a person, then you might have to pay custodial fees.
Right, in addition to.
True, yes?
Yes, that's, yeah, those fees are, those are like à la carte at the end, that's plus on top of, so whatever you're, whatever you're, the fee is for the, for the field is one thing, the staffing is totally different.
And do we, oh, go ahead.
I mean, the regulations governing use of facilities, number nineteen, I'm trying to figure out...
You might want to throw your mic down.
In the regulations, I'm trying to figure out why number nineteen, category B, is in the may request and not in the must provide, because I think I'd like the, have the youth organizations prove that they have valid and current insurance before they're on our fields.
Number nine, you said?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, sorry. C, D, and E are required to submit the insurance. A is us, so we are insured.
Yeah, so B.
And B is the ones I want to fall under the mandatory category. I don't think they have to do it on each occurrence, I think they could probably provide it on an annual basis.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
And I was going to, I mean, one of the discussions we had at policy was all of these, the procedures, the ref, section you're referencing, having legal take a look at, at the language too, because it was clearly done by legal counsel one time. There's a lot, I'm sure there's tons of things that changed.
I would certainly support having Jim look at this, because I think that'd be a great idea. I'm only looking at it briefly.
I haven't gone through it line by line, but is there any, anything that discusses, and are we considering allowing after-dark activities with portable lighting brought in?
We did not discuss that.
No, we did not discuss that, which is why we brought it here. We can put that as a note to discuss.
So the, first the question is, are we going to allow it? And then second, if we are, what do we charge? There should be additional fee for the portable lighting, like we use, like we bring in for the football games.
Right.
Well, they have to, I would, they would have to bring them in themselves.
They would supply it, we wouldn't get...
Well, the only challenge there is, is when you start letting people bring things in on their own,
Right.
you put your fields at risk.
Right, no, you're right, I would think, I wouldn't want people setting things up around the track.
I'd almost rather have them have to contract through us and we, we collect...
Do you know what I'd really like to see?
Lights.
Lights.
But, but we're not talking just the turf...
So predictable.
But I'm not talking just the turf field.
Right, there's other fields too that could be used, so...
It, it does require quite a bit of manpower, those portable lights.
Right.
I'd like to see permanent lights down on the football field, too.
Yeah, like...
Um, let's go crazy.
I remember Hampshire Hills, for a period of time, was letting a team, um, kids that they were bringing, bringing in those...
Yeah, on the back, yeah.
Bringing in those lights. And it, it, even adding a couple of hours of use made a big difference to the programs that were coming in. But there's a sizable cost, and you start having trucks and stuff driving those trailers in.
Right, right.
Right.
So, I mean, the policy, we'll talk about that, but the, are there any other questions on this document, yes?
Well, I just think you should, as we're doing it, put in lights, because it should be a separate cost.
So you want the separate, like, because we took them out, the utility and light and piece like that?
No, 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 I mean, if you wanna turn on game lights of turf fields and be there from seven to nine at night,
Yes.
that's a cost that we couldn't bear in the district. And then the other question is just knowing if they want to use scoreboards and things like that.
Right.
Well, if we ever had the lights, the renting of the field up until like five o'clock could come at one price.
Right, that's exactly, yeah.
Right, so, so should we be preparing, should we be preparing this document so that we don't have to prepare it again with the anticipation that we might have lights?
Me as well.
Anyhow, might as well, let's drink big.
Right, okay. Any other questions, Rick, that we had in policy that we need answers from the board?
No, I mean, I just really wanna get, we wanna get a sense of, were we in the ballpark with the, the big piece of doubling the fee? Should they be tripled, should they be let on doubled?
Do they seem like reasonable amounts?
I, I reserve till we've had a chance to just see what, what others are, are charging the area.
Other districts are doing, okay. Okay. So the hope is to try and get this back to you, do you think for February?
Sure.
Okay, for February, so that we can have it in place before spring season? Because I just am anticipating tons of people coming to use that turf field, so that's right. Okay, any other comments? All right, so now we are at deliberations. Got that?
Mm-hmm.
I know, I'm getting it. Okay, so, I need a motion to amend KF, Community Use of School Facilities by replacing it with a copy provided with the agenda and accept the second reading as amended. And we'll talk about the changes after we put it on the floor.
So moved.
Moved by Tom, seconded by?
Second.
Krista. So, are you, are you this, Rick, or am I this here? Okay, so this is policy KF.
So the changes that were made for a second read were removing the, um, the personal, the pronouns of his, her, and changing it with the, not necessarily grammatically correct, but seemed to be the most gender-neutral one that we could come up with, with, with their. And so as we go through the policies, we're always trying to, as we come across the his, her, as we're reviewing them, we're consciously making the effort to make them gender, gender-neutral.
I'm sorry, the copy we have doesn't have the change.
Doesn't have the red light.
Yeah, it didn't come through, no.
Didn't, oh, okay, I was wondering.
It's not, sometimes that just happens, I don't know.
Somebody has to turn on tracking when they do the, create the PDFs of the issue.
I know some of, I recognize some of that, but it's not actually...
Yeah, there's some changes that we can't really see, but that's okay.
So there, I, I can identify, there are not a ton in here, so I can go through the paragraph, that's, just tell you what it was, that they're personal. So the sec, that was the only thing in the first paragraph. Second paragraph, no changes. Third paragraph, the second sentence, facilities will be reserved only for the time, or only for the time available within the coming semester, we struck that.
You left the period in.
Yes, I will be sure to strike the period too.
I saw that, I felt like something was missing there.
And the neck following paragraphs, so the fourth paragraph, again, the, changing the, the pronouns to their. Uh, the next paragraph, same thing, changing pronouns to their. And then that's going, moving down to no school building or facility shall be used. The, we struck, struck picketing and added protesting instead of picketing, because there are many forms of protest, not just picketing. And last paragraph, superintendent or their designee. And we added the sentence, after all rentals of school facilities, the principal, their designee, reserves the right to cancel or reschedule events as circumstances dictate. And again, that's to accommodate for the playoff game, that we don't, you know, we suddenly find that we're in and we wanna be able to host now that we have this fabulous facility. And also just giving the person in the building the ability to change things without having to...
Juggle and schedule, right.
On, on the previous paragraph, who is it who makes the assessment as to whether there is a risk of it possibly occurring?
That question came up.
Mm-hmm.
It's a tough one.
Because I'm wondering if it, if it would discount any political organization?
It could.
Any, I mean, and, and then the question becomes, are we putting ourselves at risk for discriminatory practice if we allow, were to allow one group but not another group? I'm just, I don't know how, I don't know how you administer that without risk of litigation or backlash.
I guess I'm, we specifically, we're looking at that in light of our current political environment, which we find ourselves. It's a, it's a fair question, I mean, I think it's everything situational. So if, if someone wanted to use a facility and there had been, you know, consecutive protests based in the past somewhere else with that particular group, then, I mean, as a person in charge of the school, I would not want that on, on our property.
Who makes that judgment?
At this point, it's the principal or their designee, as written.
One of the concerns I had with that too is it says that it could, that it could result in picking. And, and I just worry about the principal saying, oh, yeah, this is fine, there's no history, we believe it's fine. And then there is picketing, there is, right? So that was one of my questions, was just how do, this is an anticipated thing, it may or may not happen. But as it's written, it's a little tricky.
It's an unpredictable thing, you can't predict, anything could cause protests.
Right, absolutely.
You really could.
Right, that's the difficult part, but in this policy, we're, we're trying to anticipate it.
Right, and I feel like the general message is, is there, it's just the question, it's who's making that determination?
And we can have district meeting under this policy.
That is true.
Well, that's, I think that's, so that's, the question is, how do you, how do you change the language to make sure that you give...
To contract out.
That's true, we could just go all the way.
Well, I think you could, you, there's a couple of options. You could put some wording in that, that says that ha, organizations that have experienced it. So, has it happened before? Or you could, you could pass the buck and say, in consultation with law enforcement or somebody like that.
Yeah, I mean, that's kinda what, that's what would be a current practice now. It's never, it hasn't been in isolation, it's been in, you know, in collaboration with the SAU, with law enforcement, that type of thing.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if you wanna do something to, to make it seem less subjective, less arbitrary?
I just don't know how you would do that, or how you would suggest that, because I, that was part of what I was asking, but I didn't have a good...
In the superintendent's opinion?
Yeah, put it, put it on him.
I mean, it's sort of where we are right now, I mean, we can take it back to policy and see, I mean, talk, talk about it a little bit more, I mean...
I'm, I'm wondering if you might wanna just ask Barrett or somebody of NHSBA if they have any, any model for that language?
Yeah, I would say, and, because I think this...
I'll check that.
I would start there, and I can't, um, who's the woman on Jim's staff who does most of the policy? Is it Megan?
Megan, yeah.
Um, I would check with Megan, because I think this impacts First Amendment rights.
Okay.
And I imagine she's all over this particular policy and language, because this just seems really problematic.
I can do that, and then I'll, we'll bring it back to policy, see what they say, and change it as such.
NHSBA is free.
Right, so I'll go with them first.
Start there.
I'll start with them first.
And, and grabbing, if Megan has a model policy, she, it, getting that from her should not, it should, it should be a discreet ask.
And the...
Doesn't mean it's, and, and regardless, even if we spend a couple hundred dollars and have this vetted, it's still a whole lot better than getting sued and dealing with this.
Yep.
So step one is NHSBA, and then step two might be potentially Jim's office. Got it? I'll be, I'll work with you, I'll ask you when, when I get that. Okay, great. Okay, so can, is there any other questions for Rick?
Yes, I just wanna point out one thing, I'm, the sentence that you add in the final part, the principal or their designated reserve, right? Um, I'm thankful that was added. In the form, I just wanted to, before I forget to tell you, in the form, I know there's some tweaks to that, but at the bottom of the form, there's very similar language, but at the very beginning of the form, it doesn't reflect that way. It makes it sound like it takes, it says, um, the natural disasters...
Natural disaster, that's right.
Yeah, so it says in a rare form, or the, in the rare event of a natural disaster, civil defense occurrence, or adverse weather, the principal retains the right. So, I just suggest that we change that form at the beginning to reflect, because the form at the beginning is not giving you the ability to change it, at what, but so, but the policy does.
So you wanna make the form consistent with policy, absolutely.
Yep.
Perfect.
I think if you're, if, if we're thinking about having the flexibility to cancel somebody's...
Event.
Event, I think we definitely need to have that contract vetted by council, because I can see a really good case of a breach of contract if somebody has an event that they have sent out promotional items, they've incurred expenses, and then suddenly we say, but that's our field and we're gonna use it for the soccer playoffs. They've got a real claim against us. And so I guess I would be, one, hesitant of adopting a policy that would, or a practice, because I mean, you, of, of renting it out in times where we think we might need it. And then certainly, if we do it in big, bold, all over the place, you know, it's a disclaimer, you're not getting anything for it, you know, at your own risk.
Yeah.
Because this is the middle of October, and in October, our kids do well, and we very well may have playoffs. And I would be very, very explicit in the contract, that if we are, you know, if our, if our playoff game conflicts with your event, we will cancel your event.
Right.
And if you have all that kinda disclaimer language in there, you're probably fine, but I would build it all in.
So we'll build that in, we'll put that into the fee schedule, we'll get it passed by legal, we'll check on the, um, no school building protesting thing. And, um, we will bring it back for third read next month. Can we vote on accepting this as a second read? All in favor? We're at six oh, thank you. Let's move to, hold on, I have to flip through some papers.
Class size, I...
Class size, so I need a motion to amend policy I, I, B, class size, as recommended, and to accept as third, for third reading. I don't know if we're going for adoption, yeah, thank you, Tom. Second, Melanie. Just to note, the copy in front of you, for some reason, again, things just don't always change when we want them changed. Visual art has already been removed from that list, so, um, that was removed in our first reading, so that should have been removed again. So, um, Beth, do you wanna touch on this, since you're our newest policy member?
Sure, um, in the, the first section with the changes, we added the commas, so I was hoping that, um, you could...
I don't know if that's what we wanted to do, though, but go ahead.
Yeah, that's, well, I'm not sure, so I wanted to see, because it was a little confusing from the minutes, so I wanted to double-check where they were supposed to be. So, that's one part, and then...
Yeah, let's move on to the...
Sure, and then the, the bottom part, we just switched around some of the wording, just, um, that the principal would consult with the superintendent, not the superintendent consulting with the, the principal, because it seemed to flow better that way. And then we did add a line at the end. So, I know there was concern from some board members of having class sizes too small, some wanting to make them smaller. So, the, the final sentence that was added was, in an attempt to make the board aware twice a year of where numbers were. So in the springtime, in May, you know, we talked about that would be a good time to share projected numbers. So, at that point, board member, if there's concern, we can speak up in terms of where we're at. And then some real live numbers for October of every school year, to see where they actually landed. Because we know in May, it's just a, just a guess, it's just a projection, but that way it's a check-in twice a year. So, but there's some board oversight too, because I, I think that was part of the concerns. It kind of was trying to address multiple board member concerns.
So I think what we tried to do in this was, one of the concerns that was brought up was, the principal was making these decisions sort of on their own, and we were hearing about it later on. And so, we realized that in policy, the principal's supposed to make these decisions and consult with the superintendent, but the language was backwards. So we made it so that now, when the principal's making these decisions for special circumstances, they will consult with the superintendent and then decide, and ultimately, the superintendent will be the final decision there. And then it brings the board in after that, as a reporting mechanism. And some of the reasonings is that basically by April or May, logistically, if the board were to, say, vote on that and vote it down, it's not going to impact budget, because the budget's already set and personnel have already been hired. And so, it's more of a checkpoint principle to the superintendent, and then the board understanding the situation by getting those regular reports out, and then the board can, you know, make concentrated conversational, you know, directives to make sure that, maybe if the enrollment numbers are too small at times in different classes, that the board isn't happy with that. And hopefully the principal will change. That was our thinking.
Can I, I apologize, so I was at a meeting at the Department of Ed on that policy day?
Yes.
I'm just curious, that this last sentence about May, is, is it just a notification? Or is there, would the board direct the principal to make a different choice? Because as you said, hires potentially are made and...
It's really is supposed to be, we were thinking a notification.
Okay.
Because part of the problem is that when we see the numbers in October, they're the real numbers, but it's too late to have a real understanding as to why class sizes are small. And it's not that we can do anything in May, but we'd have better understanding going into the school year of what the situation is, so...
May was the suggestion, I mean, that was kind of all the back and forth between, you know, April, May, June, like when the best timing was, and, you know, I...
It doesn't have them until April, right? You don't really have the numbers until April.
Right, that's why they were suggesting, and we also left it open-ended too, that there's no, it, it's, it says May and it says October. It doesn't say at the board meeting, it doesn't have to be presented at a board meeting, it could be in an email, it could be in, we left that very open, so it could be May first, it could be May thirty first, it, it's open for that, to allow some flexibility too, with the whole April or May or Ju, or when the right timing was.
Is there any meaningful time that you can give us the data where we could actually make an adjustment? Because this is the conversation we've had, probably like three years.
Right, I mean, the difficulty is, like, in March, we will vote on the budget. And we don't know where enrollments will fall and things of that nature. So Rick will do the schedule, and in May, we'll have some conversations. And we've added sections, deleted sections over the years. Then the reality becomes, we also go through the summer, and students start to finalize where they're thinking of going to school and different things, and they now reflect on what they signed up for and change that. So what was a fifteen becomes a nine. So in May, we added a fifteen, we sent a teacher to that section, and now it's nine in October. Maybe we wouldn't have offered it at nine, but we've already used up the teacher. I, I think what I would suggest is, I'd like the intent, but I think the piece in May will have to be a little bit more of what I would say, at the board meeting, because then if you wanted, you could say, can we see if we can hire another teacher to reduce those sections? You know, what do we anticipate for potential, you know, once we know if a period's gonna fall first to last, we know if seniors are gonna drop that cost. I mean, that's, that's the reality, and that's, that's what we face. So I don't think that the months are that bad. I think it's still a, a potential problem just on the revenue to hire a section. But the other thing that we've started to do, which has given us more flexibility, is we may have the flexibility to ask a teacher to teach an extra section. So from a budgetary standpoint, that resource could probably be found, because we're not looking at an, an additional body in new benefits package. You know, an extra section has been running about ten to thirteen thousand dollars, depending on the experience.
Tops, yeah, that's been on the high end.
Yeah.
Are contracts okay with that?
The teachers' union have been fine with that, because again, it's, it's a stipend, negotiated, and we have precedent, and that's worked very well. And we also used that a couple of years ago when we had a science teacher go out.
Yep.
And we weren't going to be able to find a, what I would say, a qualified individual, so we did...
It's happened almost every year.
Yeah, we, we divvied up all five sections, and that provided a much budget, better educational setting for the students, because the person knew our system, knew the content, and that compensation really didn't cost us anything, because we already had allocated the funds. compensation really didn't cost us anything, because we already had allocated the funds. We might have been off by a few thousand dollars.
Has anybody modeled Tim's new schedule versus the high school schedule, if there was the potential to get a math teacher who taught a section at the middle school, and then went to the rest of the day and taught at the high school, or?
So I could, well.
Or vice versa?
We've talked about that, the practical reality of that with prep times and everything. I mean, it's not impossible, but it would be, it's really hard to zoom back and forth. It's hard enough to be on a cart, that's like a.
Coverboard.
Yeah. That would not be an ideal. Well, the other thing we've done, too, is looked at, we're hiring people, looking at people with multiple certs, and that's been able to give us some flexibility within, you know, to be able to fill an extra section of French, for example. And we have that kind of baked in, if we had to.
Well, I mean, and French could be one of those classes where you end up having a high demand in the middle school, and being able to share some staffing, even with one of those dual certifications.
So one of the things that we're looking to do in the next phase is to see if we can align more closely. With eight periods here and seven periods there, it will never match up perfectly. But I think there are some tweaks and changes that we could make to that current drop to a day, in which periods would make most sense to align with either a shared employee, or like we said before, a student who goes back and forth, or starts there and comes down here, goes back up there. So I think there are improvements to be made that would present better opportunity for that, that type of setting.
And sometimes we've hired those teachers, they weren't necessarily a full FTE. We've had to hire partial FTE teachers for the tire, you know, to fill in the math for multiple years.
Yep.
So I think one of the things we were trying to address was the concern that sometimes classes fall below 15, and even below 10. And so the policy allows the principal to make decisions to, to hold a class under 15, if it meets one of these four areas. And so the idea here is, sometimes classes fall below 10, even though they were scheduled for 12 or 15. Or maybe they were scheduled for 15, and they dropped nine. And so this gives the board a heads-up on that, like, this is a low enrollment class, you know, we're thinking about this. It gives the principal a little bit of an accountability that he has to go to the board. Because one of the other concerns was, we have great principals, but people change, and, not people change, human beings get, whatever. So.
All replace.
Right. So, and that another, you know, another person.
Staffing changes.
Staffing changes, thank you, may not have the same sort of, whatever, tendencies as we have now. And so this would allow, this gives the board a check-in, an opportunity to check in, and it also makes sure that the superintendent, and the language was written differently, and by switching it around, gives the principal to check in with the superintendent. The superintendent is that check to say, why do you have 10 kids signed up for this class? And then, when he, the principal now has to come to the board with their enrollment numbers in May, which is going to make a principal think twice before they accept a class that's 10. And it's like an accountability thing. But no, is there power here for the board to say, absolutely not? That's not a vote, it's a, just a check-in kind of thing. And then to come back in October, if this is a regular pattern for board meetings, you're going to see a better understanding of the board as to why class sizes are the way they are. And I think that would be helpful. So that's sort of why we put the language in, this way.
I think my comment would be it's a step forward, and I would recommend moving forward with it, then Rick and I and the board can evaluate whether those months are good after we've been through it for a cycle.
Well, we're supposed to, we're supposed to evaluate this every year, anyway.
Right. But I just mean, we may decide to, April is better than May, and September is better than October. You know, I mean, but I think this is good right now, because the other thing is, October happens to align with the, our official numbers to the state, so I kind of like that.
Okay. Tom, you had something to say?
Yep. Under class, where it says class size, there's classes shall have a minimum of 15, maximum of 25, unless specified below. Now, if you pop down to the last paragraph, not the last sentence, the last paragraph, says if the class exceeds the recommended maximum size, or falls below the recommended minimum size, are you referring to the 15 and the 25 in that paragraph?
I think we're referring to all these numbers.
Well, okay, but, but in the top.
Yes.
Then they are not recommended, they are required.
So maybe we should take the word recommended out.
Put specified.
Okay.
Instead of recommended there.
Prescribed?
No, it's a specification. I mean, it, it's, my point is that these are hard numbers.
It's not a recommendation, you're right.
It is a.
So what we're doing is.
Specifies. That sounds great.
Okay. Then, if you go to the paragraph above that, preferred maximum class sizes for these, and then, and all other maximum sizes should be determined. This paragraph is, it loses some of its meaning in the, in the fact that you've got a specification.
I really don't need this sentence, "All other maximum class sizes should be determined by the school administration," because we've already determined the maximum.
Okay, then if you take that, then, then if you, then I would then replace the word preferred, if it's just a, an advisory sentence.
It is, I think.
Then you could say recommended, there the word recommended might be the appropriate word. Recommended maximum class size for math, blah, blah, blah. Should be.
And it should be targeted, it should just be, should be 20.
Yeah, take the word targeted at, take targeted at out.
So recommended class size for math, science, language arts, social studies, and foreign languages should be 20 students.
Period. If that's what, if that's what you want, but just understand that with all the other things you've got in there, there's no teeth to that.
Right, it's a recommendation. Got it?
I have more, but Liz, go ahead, I think you want to jump in on that.
I'm sorry.
No.
Mine might not necessarily flow with, right now.
It's okay.
This isn't necessarily related to class size exactly. Why is foreign language on the same par as math?
Apparently, this is something that the, the staff have said, when it gets above that, it impacts their ability to instruct. I don't know. I don't, not being a foreign language person, everything's a foreign language to me.
I think we need an educator to speak to that.
Yeah, I think if the foreign language is the same as any of the other humanities, language arts, and social studies, when you go over 20, it just gets more, more and more difficult, in terms of the workload and the work you're asking to do students, and the turnaround time to have that graded in a meaningful time, amount of time, and the feedback that you're, especially at a school like ours, that you're expected to give. And we certainly know, we have classes more than 20, and we've got.
I just, I just wonder where, whether that belongs in policy, in the policy, because it's completely discretionary, and it's up to the administrators to, to implement, and the board really has no say over it.
No say over?
Whether they abide by the recommendation. Other than the fact that when it comes back, if, if it's a big number in, in, in May, per the previous discussion, we may say, what can we do to bring that down? But, I mean, you've got to assume that, that the administrators are, are also educators, and therefore, their judgment probably overrides, overrides the board's judgment if it's not policy. Do you know what I mean?
I, I don't think it hurts to have it in there.
You don't? I, I see, to me, it adds ambiguity to the policy, and, and if I were a public member, I'd say, well, which is the number? Is it really 20? If you think it should be 20, why did you set it at 25?
Um, so I think it's there because I think we all understand that we need to give the administrators some discretion between 20 and 25. But I think that it's important from a board standpoint, to have the aspiration that our class sizes really stay closer to that 20 number. And that is the goal or aspiration of everything that we're doing as a board, that we are setting a budget, or setting, you know, we don't get to set the budget, but we're going to try to recommend a budget that's going to allow us to keep our class sizes at that aspirational level. Can we always meet that in every section and every year? We can't. But I think if our aspiration is still to keep things at that 20 mark, then I want something in the policy that shows that, demonstrates that.
But what I, in, in support of the point you just made, if you made the maximum for those classes 20, the, the next paragraph gives the administrat, the administration the authority to exceed it if they have to.
Okay. Okay, I think I see where you're going.
So I see where you're going.
That may be a better way to articulate it, because the goal is 20. If we have to do 25 because of the 15 reasons I'm sure we could articulate, then we might. But I don't want that to be the standard. And that's been my frustration, when we get to that class size conversation every year, is I feel like we've just kind of lost sight of what our goal was, which was to have the class sizes around 20, and we've just fell into a bad habit, where they are more like 27, 28. And we've started targeting our budget for that 27 or 28, which I don't think was what we, as a board, had wanted to do when we passed the policy.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you would like to see us take out that recommended statement, change class size maximum to 20, and since we have the exception to going over, that the principal would then need to bring all of his classes that are going over maximum to the superintendent for a, just a double check. Thank you, Rick. I'm just trying to clarify what the point is.
I would love, and I'm sure Tim would love to have classes of 20. And I think it's great to have the, the board expressing its will in there. I, I do think it's best practice to have that number. I just, in our current enrollment environment, if we stay where we were projected to stay, there's, there's, there's no, we wouldn't be able to, even we could hire them, we wouldn't be able to.
Your list of how many classes would be exceeding 20 would be extensively.
Can I give an example? So with 200 kids approximately, per class, with two teams, and five classes each period, four cores, and a special each period, you're talking 10 sections, you're talking about 20 kids if your class is at 200. So any class that's above 200, you're going to go beyond that 20, best-case scenario. Best-case scenario, with those kids divvied up over 10 sections per period, you're automatically going to be over that 20. And right now, we have a class that's 209, and I think my seventh, my eighth grade is just 100.
We're not budgeting for 20 kids per class.
So it's, so there's a certain level of insincerity to have that 20-person recommendation, because we're not doing anything else to support that.
Well, I think the, the, the other reality is, I don't know if we have the physical space.
Not saying we don't have the space.
Yeah. No, I mean, we're still, I mean, the, if, if we really, as a board, want.
20.
Want to hit 20, there's a whole bunch of things that we're not even thinking, they're not even on our radar to achieve that. So to put this in, to me, is.
Disingenuous?
Insincere, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, and, and honestly, we may need to bump this up to the realistic number, which might be 25, and we might need the public to get upset with us, because reality isn't what they actually want.
So maybe what we do, we'll bring this back to policy. If we take that statement out, we'll bring it back all cleaned up next month. We can take the recommendation out, the recommended 20 students out, talk about it a little bit more next month, potentially pass it. Hopefully, these check-ins for the next year will give us more of a sense of how many, you know, how much, how much we're going over 25, how much we're going over, what we're, and that's the whole idea. Seeing those enrollment numbers in May, seeing them again in October, will help us to see. And also, those will be on the agenda, in the public document, so that the public can see what we're doing here. So we are not disingenuous, because I do agree that that could be seen as that. We clean the policy up in that way. It's, becomes a simpler policy, 15 to 25, and that's how we go forward. So would that work for everyone? We go back to policy, fourth read next month, and cleaned up version? It gives you more time to think about it. How's that sound? Do you have anything else?
Yeah, just one more is the grammar thing.
Yeah, I actually have a grammar thing, too, but I figured I just.
How about we do the grammar things.
That's why.
No, no, but the or.
Yeah, you got to take the or out.
No, I was going to say, no, but the, I put the or there when I was recommending, putting out, so now you put, you leave the comma there, put the comma after, a comma there, so it's just.
Okay. So why don't we do the grammar things offline?
That's.
Does that make sense? And we can move forward. Can we take a vote on this for third read? All those in favor? opposed? No, okay, great. Thank you. All right. So moving on to J I C K, which again, had a similar issue with the tracking, track changes. So we apologize for that. We're trying our best to do this. So are you guys ready? Tim is going to go over this a little bit with us.
So for J I C K, the changes from the last reading and our more recent edits both appear, so I'll just highlight the most recent ones from policy. The first one.
Oh, gosh, we didn't make a motion. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
We have to go back. We need to make a motion to amend policy J I C K, pupil safety and violence prevention, bullying, by replacing it with a copy provided with the agenda and accept as third reading. Can someone make that motion? Tom, second.
Second.
By Beth, sorry. And now, Tim. Thank you.
So the first edit that we made this round is in section six, distribution and notice of this policy. We wanted to be consistent with the title of that section, and so we changed some language to include, "All staff will be made aware and provided access to a copy of this policy annually." So it used to read that they were just provided with a copy. So we wanted it to state that they will be made aware, so it's not just a link on a website and saying that everybody's been notified. And that same language is repeated, both for staff and volunteers, for students, and for parents in the next two sections as well. So same language, we made the same edits in those three. In addition, in, under the parents section, we had some requests brought forward to change the language. The way it was written before did not really make sense. It was, it just didn't make sense the way it was written. So we changed the language to the last sentence there, under parents.
Which section are you in?
Section six, behind.
Yep.
Under parents.
Yep.
They will also be told that to help prevent bullying at school, they should, one, encourage their child to report bullying when it occurs, and to cooperate fully with school personnel in identifying and resolving incidents. So we changed, we combined some of the language from number four, and you see crossed out, and brought that up to number one. Number two stayed the same. Number three, I, it came from the, the reading here, I believe. We wanted to identify a member of the school staff, kind of more clearly defined, not just informing the school, not knowing who to call. And we at least took a step in that direction, inform a member of the school staff immediately if they think their child is being bullied, or bullying other students. Any comments on those edits?
Was Beth in? Did you buy into those, Beth?
Yes, those are mine. And I just noticed a little typo, but I'll, yeah.
Semi-colon.
It's a semi-colon instead of a period, but it's easy enough to fix.
This one has one too.
So it should be, this is the final one, so maybe, I don't know.
Is there anything else on that?
If you move to section 11, investigative procedures, and the new, number eight, the last, about, I should, the sentence, "Determination of whether a particular action or incident constitutes a violation of this policy shall be based on all facts and surrounding circumstances. If the determination is that there has been a substantiated incidence of bullying, the principal shall include recommended remedial steps necessary to stop the bullying within a written final report submitted to the superintendent."
Do you have an extra word in there?
Okay.
You have within in.
Within in, within in a written final report.
Yep. I don't know which one you want, do you want the within or the in?
Within a written final report, I think, is what the policy agreed.
And those are all the changes from this read, right? Are there any comments on this? Questions? We have a few minor changes, you think, for next time and just maybe read, maybe adopt it next? Is that okay, Gina? I know that, I know you're trying to align these with other districts, one more. Okay, great. I don't think there's anything major.
No, there's just a couple little things.
Was the, the change from five to ten days, was that from the previous?
That was from the previous, yes.
That was to make it consistent, I think.
Okay. Are we ready?
We're just, we're not looking to adopt.
It's on.
No, we're just looking to move it forward to, we'll adopt it next month though, so it gives you one more chance. It's a really lengthy policy, it gives members another chance to read it one more time and check it and see if there's anything.
The only thing I was gonna say is we need to update the...
First reads, yeah, the second ones, yep, we'll do that. So we need to update the, at the end, yeah.
Yeah, just because we need to put the second reading.
It should be second read today.
Was today second?
Yes.
Today, second was, but for some reason, I think we just need a motion to do third.
I do too.
No, oopsie.
So we need to amend that, it should have been second.
Also, the November, the first read was in December, wasn't it?
Well, that's what I don't know, did we do November, December, and?
No, the first read was actually December.
Okay.
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 We just gotta fix that for them.
Okay.
Okay.
So do you need to amend that?
Just correct it, I think.
Correct it, we'll correct it in a minute, okay. All those in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that's six oh, all right. So I believe that finishes our agenda, am I right? Oh, no, I'm not, nope, nope. So at this point, we'd like to, we're introducing a new, very quick segment to the agenda, which is highlights of the co-op. If there's anything that you, the board members have seen, I mean, Rick and Tim do a great job highlighting what has been going on. But if you, this is an opportunity as a board member, if you've seen something great in our schools, whether it's a play or an instance of kids being great to each other, it's an opportunity for you to do that or to highlight something that's coming up. So for example, the Sea Perch project is coming up in February and in the past, board members have been invited to that. And I've attended that and checked that out and that's been a great thing. You don't have to invite us, but you know, it was great to check it out and I really found it to be a really wonderful experience for the kids. I didn't go last year because I had a son participating and my children prefer me not to be around. You would too if you were my child. So is there anything else?
Go ahead.
Um, just a couple of things, I want, I did get to participate since the last board meeting and I got to go observe robotics. We had a big robotics expo that our high school team hosted, but not only hosted, but actually helped participate in ways for our elementary schools. And they had, I think it was fifty-six teams participate. And were you, I think you did stop, did you stop by too? I know he was there, I used to know if I'd been able to make it. You know, I was able to go, I saw Rick there, the commissioner of education was there and threw on a Hawaiian shirt too with everybody else. So it was a really neat experience to see everybody out there. And it got really good coverage too, it was actually the front page of the newspaper too. And that was at the high school. The other thing I have at the high school too, just to be aware of, is the Manadnock Valley Musical Festival is this weekend. It involves, I think, twelve different high schools, but we have quite a handful of Hollis Brookline students participating in it, weather permitting, like hopefully it won't snow. But that'll be out at Manadnock this weekend, so. And then I did get to go to the middle school, the social emotional learning, I know you brought that up. You mentioned the pies in the face, you didn't mention the dancing inflatable unicorn. And it was, it was quite something to see, it was really, really, I think the biggest takeaway for me is as silly and everything as it was, it was not wasted time, so it was very neat to see that. And then you've already mentioned the other things too. I got to go to the cancers versus, or the coaches versus cancer, which was really neat to see all the turnout for that. But Wrestling for Change, Tim already highlighted too, so that's coming up and a really good event to go to, so.
Tom?
In the last couple of weeks, I've, I've had a chance to talk to a couple of our, members of our senior class for some college-related things. But at least a couple of them have been involved with the Senior Quest program. And I, the experiences they've relayed to me and what they've learned from that is, is pretty significant and not at all what one would traditionally think is, might be the, the learning, but along the lines of what, what Rick has highlighted. And that is how much they've learned about the process of coming up with an idea and fleshing it out. It's not so much the content of their project as learning how to manage themselves and identify resources. I mean, all the things that one would hope that they would get out of the project beyond a specific item of, I learned how to spell something or I learned the, the population in some country. It was very impressive, both that they learned it, but perhaps more importantly, that they realized they've learned it and can articulate the importance of it. And I was really impressed and I, I congratulate your, your staff for creating the environment for them to have that experience in high school.
They do an amazing job, thank you.
Melanie?
Thank you. Well, I had an opportunity to see the Hollis Brookline students that won We the People. I was in Concord and I got to say hello to all of them. I was impressed by the size of the group, first of all. There were so many students, what, twenty-one students or?
Close to that, I think.
Yeah. And I didn't know that they had won at the time, I didn't get to stay.
They didn't win yet.
They didn't win yet?
No, they won, they won, but not when you saw them.
Right, right, they hadn't won yet. So later on that evening when I found out that they won, it was very exciting. And I committed to working with you next year when you do We the People.
That's great, thank you. Anybody else? Awesome, great, I like that. Okay, thank you, thank you for the suggestion, Beth. And that's my title for it. Okay, report out from the process observer.
From a schedule standpoint, we did really well, it bounced around a little bit, got a really quick start. And through the reorg, the, the adjustment of the agenda, things were handled really well. So if people are reasonably happy with the outcome, I don't think anything was rushed, but the schedule was well-built. The only thing I will point out is, again, our adjust, our agenda is heavy on bureaucracy and not so heavy on students. But I think we're getting better, at least keeping that on our radar. So overall, the meeting was really well-conducted and I hope people felt it was productive.
And at this point, I need, we do need to go into public session, so I need a motion that the board...
Non-public.
Non-public, sorry, did I say public? I meant non-public.
She thought non.
I thought non, but I need a motion that the board by roll call go into non-public session, pursuant to all of day ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two. And what, do we know which one we are, all of them?
C, reputation.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, so moved by Tom, seconded by Krista. I need a roll call, so...
Melanie, aye.
Oh, Melanie, sorry, there. Okay.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Krista, aye.
Liz, aye.
Liz, aye, okay, great, and thank you all for your opinions.
Dawn, if you're listening, I just wanted to put on, Melanie's arrival time was six thirteen. Thank you.